Try to stay out of trouble.
Call to order the planning commission regular meeting for July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty four. I will ask for roll call.
Anderson.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Brooker.
Here.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Leshay.
Here.
The man's.
Here. Next, it's the approval of the agenda. Anybody have any changes or additions?
Support.
Support. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Everyone had the minutes emailed to them in the packet. Everybody have a chance to review them? Any comments on it? If not, we can move to the approval of the minutes.
I got a quick one. Go ahead.
Just my comment was a little bit, I misunderstood the way it was written and what I asked for. It's talked about noise levels. It was more to how are we going to measure the twelve police powers that we pass for the STR? So we're setting a baseline and then being able to respond, you know, look at it in six months, a year, whenever, and have a baseline against that. That's what I was asking.
Do you know where that is CJ?
The commissioner comments, that's first one. It's short and it's the noise level. I said, well, we're not, I'm not expecting anybody to go out and measure the noise level for a base level. But other than that, I approve the minutes as I saw them. I will.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Anyone else with any revisions you'd like to make? Then would we move to a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I.
Closed, seeing none, approved, which takes us to the public comment section. Now, this is public comments on the agenda items, which is just one tonight. If you would like to speak, if you're online, please just raise your little hand and we'll see that. And if you're in the room, please come up to the microphone, limit your comments to three minutes. Give us your name, your address. And we welcome you.
Hello there. Thank you for having me. My name's Kyle Conwinski. I actually live over in Grand Rapids, Michigan. But I'm here, I represent a nonprofit organization called Sagatuck Neighbors. Sagatuck neighbors are folks in Sagatuck who either own or manage a short-term rental. And they have organized for the purpose of advocating for reasonable regulations with respect to short-term rentals. And they asked me to come and speak today on a few things that we saw in the proposed ordinance that we think should be addressed. And I do think based upon a review of the proposed ordinance in your packet, there's a few issues that I think need to be seriously considered, if not changed, prior to being recommended to city council. So first and foremost, I think that the, because of the fact that it treats districts differently. In my opinion, based upon a review of the city charter, it sets up council members who are going to vote for this to have an automatic conflict of interest. And that's pretty clear because of the distinction between R two and R one. The city charter, so this is what governs the city of Sagatuck, states that no member of the council shall vote on any issue or matter in which he or a family member has both either A, a propriety or financial interest, or as a result, may receive a financial interest. For anyone living in R two, which we know for a fact, there are council members living in R two that voted on this. They will have higher property values. Undoubtedly, they are going to be able to sell their property for a higher value than someone living in R one. There's clear economic studies that show short-term rentals increases property values. And so the people who are voting in favor of these caps saying, we should only have them in R one. If they are looking for their house or ever going to sell their house, which I would say at some point everyone does. They are going to financially benefit and under the city charter, they should not be voting. So we think that's, you know, a major issue. Second, even with that same concept, why are we treating R one and R two differently? And I, and I don't know if there's reasons or not. But the law does have an equal protection clause. I'm sure everyone's heard that word. It's a fancy legal word. And we can't treat people differently unless we have a reasonable basis. And why are we? Why aren't we counting condominium units in R two towards the total dwelling units? Why, why don't, and there needs to be a rational basis to do that. And so we think, you know, the conflict of interest issue in particular, before we vote on it, because that's a lot harder to change after the fact. And I, and I know based on my own personal experience, you know, the city of Sagatuck's been embroiled in some pretty serious litigation. And the last thing that benefits any resident of this city is more of that. Secondly, I want to talk about the cap. The current ordinance as written says that.
That's a three minute.
Says that city council cannot change.
You're eleven, you, I'm sorry.
You're all right.
And I just say, it's a zoning, it's a zoning ordinance, which means if it's not passed as an ordinance, I would argue it's invalid under the zoning enabling act. But I think the cap amount needs to be in the actual ordinance as opposed to be set by residents. Thank you and sorry for.
No, thanks Kyle. Next.
Hello, my name is Michael Sanders. My wife and I are new to Sagatuck and we're currently building a home. I'd like to start by thanking the commission for letting me leave some comments. I commend the city's.
What's your?
Oh, one ninety-seven Sugar Hill Court. I commend the city's proactive stance on limiting the influx of short-term rentals. When unregulated, STRs can displace the residents that make Sagatuck truly a special, that makes Sagatuck truly special. And STRs can become a nuisance to neighbors when unregulated. However, I urge you to carefully consider the potential, potential impact of broadly implementing a twenty percent cap on short-term rental licenses without considering the nuances of owner occupied ADUs. My wife and I chose to build our future in Sagatuck, not as temporary dwellers, but as permanent residents who wish to contribute to the city's vibrancy. Part of our plan involves constructing an accessory dwelling unit in ADU on our property. A space we intend to share with our aging parents and when vacant with vacationers looking to experience Sagatuck's charm. This ADU, along with the income generated from short-term renters, helps make this dream financially feasible for us. With the rise in living costs that we all know about, an STR license provides a means for us to offset our increasing expenses. By imposing a broad twenty percent cap on STR licenses, you may unintentionally disadvantage families like our own whom you are trying to protect. We specifically ask you to consider two significant factors when deciding the future of STR license allocations. Firstly, prioritize full-time residents over outside investors and second homeowners when allocating STR licenses. This way, we ensure that some of the profit generated stays within the community and helps support local families. Secondly, allow exemptions for ADUs associated with owner occupied primary residences. As the owners are living onsite, we are diligent in maintaining our property, regulating our guests and ensuring that we don't cause disruptions for our neighbors. I would argue that there should not be any cap on ADUs on owner occupied properties for these reasons. The proposed regulation could be amended to allow for STR rentals whenever the owner is present on property. This would defend against owners who may only live here for six months and then rent out their home for the rest of the year. We've chosen Sagatuck as our forever home and look forward to raising a family here. We respectfully ask for your consideration in supporting local families who may benefit from STR licenses. So thank you for the time.
Thank you, Michael. And thank you for the perfect three-minute timing. Anyone else in the room? Anyone online? Seeing none, we will close out the public comment section. Old business, we did not have anything on the agenda, which will take us then to the new business. Which is the review of the draft zoning ordinance amendment and setting a public hearing. Before we do that, I'll ask Ryan to kind of catch us up with where we are. But the one thing, you know, to the people who did speak, you know, tonight, as you will see, is just us talking about the public hearing on the ordinance, which would occur next, at next month's meeting, if it's approved here this evening. That will be where the public comments will really come in in regards to the zoning ordinance as it's be reviewed. Is that correct, Ryan?
Yeah, that's correct, Mr. Chair. And good evening, planning commissioners. And yeah, so. I think you all are well aware that you, that you made a recommendation to the city council last month, you know, in concept for them to have a discussion about short-term rental caps. Well, they're not, there should be continued, you know, staff time and discussion and, and heading that direction. And, and so the city council took that up at a workshop meeting and a subsequent city council regular meeting, heard a lot of public comments. And ultimately, did vote to, to direct staff to prepare the necessary ordinance amendments, resolution language and policy necessary to implement a cap on the total number of short-term rental licenses that may be issued within the city's R one residential districts. That was consistent with the following, very similar to what you had recommended, that the cap would be established by, by resolution of the city council and amount approximately equal to twenty percent of the dwelling units in each R one district. The cap would not operate retroactively. So if you had an existing short-term rental license, that would remain valid unless there's a transfer of property or the license is revoked or lapses. There were some concerns that the council had about status of five sixty Campbell and the multifamily units out there and them kind of dealing with some zoning related issues with their property. So they made a, directed staff to take a look at that issue and them not counting towards the caps. The vote indicated that once available, so if any of the residential districts actually are below that twenty percent level, that new STR licenses would be issued via lottery system. And then they voted that the planning commission would not be involved in assisting with the preparation of an amendment to the short-term rental police powers ordinance. So what staff recommended to the council was really a kind of a multi-pronged approach in that if there was a desire to move forward with implementing caps in certain zoning districts, that that be via a zoning amendment and a police powers ordinance and possibly a resolution as well. So consistent with that direction, I worked with our legal counsel to prepare at least the zoning amendment portion, which is before you tonight. For your feedback and review, and then a request to you as a finding commission to set a public hearing on that. Possibly at your next meeting.
Very good. Thank you, Ryan. So help me in understanding, maybe the people in the booth has a question. You know, like the sample motion is in here, is the motion to set a public hearing. Is it also up for discussion amongst the commissioners as to what would be in the ordinance?
So as, so as it relates to the, you know, the zoning ordinance, you know, certainly whatever text you feel is appropriate to be in the zoning ordinance, certainly within your purview to make that recommendation to the city council.
But I mean, as far as, it's like what's written here, it's, is the motion just to kind of approve this for the public hearing as it's written? Or recommend revisions of before the public hearing?
So yeah, if you have ideas of revisions that you would like to see, I know, you know, even in talking with, you know, our legal counsel, we're still evaluating some different things. So there, there may be some language changes. So if you have certain language changes that you're interested in, then absolutely we would welcome that.
Then after the public hearing is planning, so let's move, I'm just trying to. So like next month, a public hearing takes place. At the end of that, when we're making a recommendation to council. Can you incorporate things you hear at the public hearing at that time?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
It doesn't change after the public hearing though, correct? Any changes to the proposed language would require another public hearing if something were to change afterwards.
Not necessarily. I'll let our legal counsel speak to that. I know that that question's come up before and so.
Yeah, I, I think it would depend on the extent of the changes that the planning commission was recommending. If it's, if it's minor adjustments, I think that's totally fine to make those after the public hearing. I mean, the purpose of the public hearing is to, you know, engage in fact-finding and get community input. So certainly some changes can be implemented after that without requiring a second public hearing. If there's major deviations from what was presented the first time around, then maybe that's a discussion about whether or not a second public hearing is warranted.
Thank you.
Of course. And on that point, if I may, if it were a substantive change, however, that might be defined by anybody. Then I believe that would require a second public hearing. Isn't that correct?
If it's substantial.
Yeah, I think so.
The word I'm using. Legal term.
Yep. I, in my opinion, I think it's a bit of a gray area as to.
I don't think we want any gray areas.
Substantive change. But certainly, I mean, if there's, if there's considerable deviations, my recommendation, and Kyle is listening and probably making faces right now. But yeah, to err on the side of caution, certainly if we're, if we're departing significantly from, from what's being presented, a second public hearing could be warranted.
For example, if it were changing a semicolon to a comma, I think that might be, that might pass muster, but changing twenty to twenty-five might be different. For example.
But that's not in the ordinance.
There's, yeah, right now, the document in front of you doesn't, doesn't have that.
The question was about after the public hearing, a significant change to the ordinance, which could be, as this gentleman's talking about, ADUs for full-time property owners. Let's use that one instead of twenty.
Exactly. Perfect.
That kind of thing. So.
Yeah. So I mean, the way the zoning enabling act is, is it requires a public hearing on a zoning amendment. It doesn't provide specific guidance as to when a zoning amendment with changes becomes a, a different amendment. I mean, in practice, I've seen changes implemented, you know, at the legislative body level. So for instance, by the city council or township board, and that doesn't necessarily require a new public hearing either. So there are some level of changes. I mean, I, I think the way I'd treat that, rather than telling you how many semicolons you can add or subtract, is just whatever the planning commission comes out to. You know, staff can evaluate it at that point and decide whether another public hearing is required.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Of course. Thank you.
I have a question for Ryan. There, there. One fifty-four point zero two two brand V and brand, there already are ten sections, ten subsections. Where do you envision this new ordinance to go? Or I don't, the way it's written, it looks like it replaces all ten of these. And I can't imagine that's what staff or attorney is anticipating.
So those ten were replaced a few months ago when we implemented the short-term rental licensing police powers ordinance. We, we, we changed that zoning ordinance then to kind of take out the references to a short-term rental certificate, reference to license. So, so that's probably not that, that updated English.
All right. So let me make my general question. How many of our provisions there are in, in subsection V of this provision, where if we, if the, we were to pass this and the city were to pass this, would it go at the end of subsection B?
City, I, I think I can answer your question. So right now, subsection V, as it was amended, includes sub one and two. Okay. So we would just be adding sub three.
Perfect. That's what I wanted to know. Sorry. Thank you. It's perfect. What I wanted to know. Thanks.
Then a question would be like, if you were to entertain. Like if people are talking about the exclusion for ADUs or exclusion for full-time, that's not actually in the ordinance language. So would that be something that would only be in the police powers or could it be in the ordinance language as it's?
It, it could be in the ordinance language. My thinking would be that the zoning amendment and the amendment to the police power ordinance would be substantially identical.
And to the concern that the gentleman raised about, you know, owner occupied ADUs and renting out an ADU separately. You know, that's, that's something that we've discussed before, right? That required a special land use of approval. Regardless of that, short-term, long-term. So, you know, you know, the comments have been received from him and some other folks. So we are evaluating that. So if the planning commission has any particular feedback on that tonight, I mean, I'm sure they would welcome that so we can further evaluate it.
Well, that's where I was trying to figure out because I didn't know, given where it talks about, you know, section three A, it's just saying that there could be limits imposed by ordinance. And then we actually move on to where we talk about the license will not expire, you know, unless you sell the home. And then we have, how will we issue ones afterwards? But there's really no place in here that talks about the actual limits, what's included, what's not included. So I didn't know if that's only going to be in the police powers and this is just referencing the police powers or, because how would I start to talk about, okay, give an exception for ADU when I haven't even talked about the other limitations in the ordinance? Because the ordinance just references a police power. See what I'm saying?
Yeah, I see what you're saying. So.
Yeah. So it's, as, as presented, the idea would be that the mechanism for establishing the cap is provided by ordinance. But given that the number of the cap is calculated by the total number of dwelling units in a given district, which is constantly shifting. The thought would be to include the numbers within the resolution.
Right. Which is the police powers resolution ordinance you're talking about?
It's just a resolution. So the police power ordinance would also have a, you know, established, you know, provide the same mechanism to establish the caps through resolution.
So again, I don't know if we're talking about taking this up, but if we did. Would you actually include that language in the subsection A?
So if there is a specific exclusion, like so for instance, accessory dwelling units, that the planning commission believes should be included, you know. I, I mean, there's, there's some provisions here that already speak to how these caps are implemented beyond the number that's established by resolution. If there was an exclusion like ADUs that you wanted to include, that could be done in the ordinance itself.
Okay.
Or it could be done by resolution. If I follow it incorrectly, it could really be done either way.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think either one would be doable. I mean, there's, there's still some discussions that, that staff needs to have exactly on how to implement this. So I, I think, I mean, I guess, and Ryan, you can help me out here if, if you feel differently. But if there are, you know, conceptual recommendations, if that exclusion is something that you want to see, you know, included here prior to the public hearing, I, I think Ryan and Dave and I can work out how to implement that before the public hearing.
So how would city council get looped in?
That's what I'm trying to figure out is how does it all work?
That wasn't part of what city council recommended, or that wasn't part of the city council motion.
Well, I think as it relates to your zoning ordinance, it's within your purview to come up with a text of a zoning, you know, zoning text that you feel comfortable recommending or not recommending to the city council. So if this body feels that certain language should be in there or not in there, then that's within your purview, at least on the zoning piece.
Yeah. At the end of the day, I mean, it's, it's, it's a zoning amendment, like any zoning amendment. I mean, whether the zoning amendment comes from staff or the direction of the city council. I mean, the planning commission's job is to review and provide input and recommendation, which may include adjustments from where the amendment started originally.
But I guess.
If I understood Anne's question and answer, it could be included instead in the police powers ordinance rather than the zoning ordinance. By resolution.
So the, the resolution wouldn't be a police power ordinance or a zoning ordinance. It would just be a resolution of council.
But I'm thinking probably what you're saying is like right now, where it says by resolution, it could set limits and it can set exceptions. So if we wanted to keep the zoning vague to where any future resolution could make changes without having to change zoning, we would not include specifics.
Right. But if you wanted to include specifics for whatever reasons you deem advisable, then I personally don't have an issue with including that in the text of the amendment to be recommended to council.
So I was looking forward to this meeting. I felt like, okay, we have direction from city council. We're just going to make some rules to make sure everybody can understand them. And now we're lost again a little bit. So.
I don't, yeah, it doesn't seem like we're. I don't feel lost. Go ahead.
But I feel like there's potential discussion of other recommendations that are starting to bubble to the surface that we may want to retake back to the city council. That's what I'm hearing. The mechanics of how it gets written into the language. I think Ryan had the great suggestion of saying, well, we'll figure out what those mechanics are. But if you guys have a recommendation on the spirit.
Correct.
Of what we're implementing here, let's get it out on the table and discuss it. That's what I'm hearing.
That's what I would.
I think you're right. I think what we'd like to kind of see is if we have recommendations, but I'm not certain.
At least I want to put out that we can include it in like this paragraph A.
But doesn't.
Like I'm not, I'm not certain it's in the best interest for me personally to include it in there. Because now we're starting, if, if all of a sudden a council down the road wants to make a change, we may have to go back and have a rewrite the zoning, have another public hearing before we can remove something from what's in zoning. Is that correct? I could say that we added in, we're going to look, we recommend ADUs and whatever.
And there might be some additional effects.
And then down the road, they want to make a change to the resolution. It would require us to go back and also then make a change first to the zoning, which would then require a whole rewrite, another public hearing.
Yeah. And, and we might be able to get creative with, with having, I guess, kind of a, a starting threshold included in the ordinance with the ability to adjust it through resolution later on. I mean, like Ryan indicated, there's still, there's still some things that we have to iron out with how this is implemented. So probably at this point in time, circling back to, you know, just conceptual. What should be included, what's good and what's bad, I think is going to be the most useful.
Right. And I think to Ryan's point and probably yours too. They've, and Joey's even better than me was, you're trying to get a feedback of if we would like to have council consider other things for their resolution. Because the resolution's not going to come before the planning commission. The resolution is going to be drafted and go straight to council since they've asked for it not to come through planning commission. Is that correct? So this is, if you want them to consider other things, this is where you would at least request it. Correct?
We're advising you of what your options are. If that's what you choose, it would like to do. I'm not, I don't know that staff's necessarily saying that you have to.
Right. I'm just saying.
Additional things.
But if there was to be things that they wanted to, as a commission, if we wanted to say, hey, we, we would recommend that when the resolution's drafted, council, consider this. We wouldn't actually put it in here. We could make a recommendation even after the public hearing.
Next one. Well, I don't know that that's necessarily, I think that the council, you know, was, you know, was asked, do you want the planning commission to consider kind of some of those police power related items? I would, I would think the same would kind of apply towards what they decide to put in a resolution or not. You know, it's probably not something that they asked for your opinion on that.
Right.
But you do have a mechanism. If you want, they feel like certain things should be in zoning text form, that, that's, that is within your purview to make recommendations on that.
Got it. Okay.
Um, I, I want to apologize for not understanding the difference. I thought the police powers ordinance and the resolution were basically the same thing. Apparently they're not. Correct.
Correct.
What's the city council will be doing? I don't know. I don't need to know. I don't know what's going to be doing in our police powers ordinance. But now I understand what the resolution is standalone from the police powers ordinance. I think, my opinion is that we were given clear direction from city council what to do. And we are simply following what our ordinances require us to do. And with that, I will make a motion to set a public hearing on the zoning ordinance amendment as provided to us for August fifteenth at seven P M.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion that's been made in second?
Yeah, copy. Again, I support it. I just want to make sure that it's clear and everybody understands it. I find that the, our recommendation did include some P R E and some ownership discussion. They left it out. They'll, they'll deal with it themselves. So it's fine. But I'm, I'm interested in why the carve-out and I'm all for the carve-out. I think that property deserves it, but it seems like it's, we picked an address. We didn't say this is why, this is the reason, so that because of the other property over here has similar situations, are you going to deal with that? So that is a concern. Because I feel like by carving out just an address, it's a little bit of an odd way to deal with that.
And where is the carve-out? The carve-out will be in the resolution or in the police power? Because it's not in the zoning.
Yeah. What I would say broadly is I, yeah. Good feedback. I think we're, we're still discussing that and evaluating that and what, how best to handle that at this point.
But that's not in what we're going to have in the open meeting of zoning. That won't be part of what we're looking at.
That's not included in the text as presented to you at this point.
Yeah. B C P's. City council handle.
Yeah. I mean, it's. Any other discussion on the motion? Then I will ask for a roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Brooker. Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Leshay.
Yes.
Manz.
Yes. So there will be a public hearing scheduled for August fifteenth at seven o'clock during a planning commission meeting. At that time, we'll be reviewing what's in the zoning. We had no communications. We had no communications. We have the officers' reports. Didn't have anything in here. Ryan, do you have anything that you wanted to add regarding, want to give a status update on any thing with the city or on the director?
Yes, well, so we, at first I was thinking the normal report that I provide to you, I with wearing two hats, I haven't been able to do my normal lengthier planning and zoning report, but it will come back with a new staff member, I assure you, but at least that'll be the expectation. So, yes, we accepted applications for a period of time for the new director of planning and zoning. We had, you know, some good interest in that that position. The panel has conducted some initial interviews with with some of the applicants, consisted of Chair Mans, the historic district commission chair, zoning board of appeals chair, myself and Mayor Stanton, and we kind of narrowed the field down from from that group to two finalists. And so the two finalists were able to informally kind of meet some of our other staff members and then sit down with me for additional one-on-one interview and we'll be making written offers very soon, so. So we'll have somebody on board who plays him.
So then will it be announced once the offer's accepted?
Yeah, in the case of the director of planning and zoning, yeah, once the offer's accepted, we'll be able to move forward with that. The direct, the, our city treasurer and finance officer as a will be a little more contingent because there's a city council approval requirements and a little bit more background check work there, so. Yeah, yeah, no, I hear you. I'm with you, so.
They would actually be known to us, I'm hoping, by the August fifteenth meeting.
They might even be here for that meeting. We'll see. Maybe we'll really throw them in, right? I'll be here too, I assure you.
Showed up right away.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, okay, so, yep.
Trust me, it's, this part of it will be much easier than the resolution part.
Well, you never know.
Never know. You never know. Anything else? I don't know. The committee or officer reports. So now we move to the second round of public comment. On this one, it could be a public comment on anything that you would like to bring forth to the planning commission. Again, we ask that you limit your comment to three minutes. If you would like to speak, you come up to the microphone in this room or raise your hand online. Give us your name and address, and we welcome you.
Well, everyone knows you can't give an attorney only three minutes, so I got to come up again. But what I wanted to finish and say, and I do think this is a consideration for the substance of the next meeting, is by allowing the cap to be set by resolution, you are taking that out of the zoning ordinance. That is one of the, if not the most important aspect of what we are doing with this ordinance. And I think that truly does run afoul of the Michigan zoning enabling act. You are making it so that the cap number is non-referendum-able. And that's the whole purpose under Michigan law of these procedures that you have to do it under a zoning ordinance, is that the citizens can be able to do a referendum to a zoning ordinance if they want. And here, we are allowing city council by resolution, which is a motion, it's not even an ordinance, to to change the cap. If the cap were ninety percent, no one's objecting to this, right? The whole reason people will object is because it's going to be twenty percent. But you're taking out the ability to do a referendum, and I think frankly, it's improper under the Michigan zoning enabling act because it is a zoning change. And we can't do that by resolution by the city council. So I think truly that needs to be changed. And I want one other. This is a fine point. I appreciate the fact that there is a carve-out for people who are grandfathered. You know, other other communities have not done that, and so that that's a nice carve-up, great. What it says in there is that that the fact that you had an existing license is not in itself a reason to deny a renewal, okay? In itself, that implies it can be a factor. It shouldn't be a factor. It shouldn't be a factor. The fact that you're grandfathered, it, that when you are up for a renewal for a certificate and you were grandfathered, you should look at all the normal circumstances of that house. But the fact that you have a grandfathered property shouldn't be a factor at all. So it shouldn't say in itself, it should say it shouldn't be a factor. And that's what I wanted to point out too, because I think that's an important point for these people who are grandfathered. That's very important to them that they will be protected without being frankly treated differently solely because they are grandfathered. I would urge the committee to consider that point as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Anyone online? I don't see any hands. Anybody else? Is there a hand? Oh, Ethan. Ethan, if you'd like to unmute.
Yeah, Ethan Bardy, property owner in Sagittalk and in the township as well. Just, just a quick comment. I just want to make comment on what happened in a couple of meetings that we need to, that we need to address. It's a certain individual on the council. At one meeting I got up and your council member said some swear words about some comments that I made. I have, I have the right to an opinion. And at last meeting, this council member was swearing outside of city hall and actually lunged at a woman, and I had to step in front of that to stop the altercation. So the person is sitting next to CJ. I'm not sure what his name is, but I'd like to know. And I will follow up with, you know, how I can make a complaint. And we, there were several witnesses there, and it was very inappropriate, and it was quite frankly scary. So I just want to make that comment, and I will follow up with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ethan. Anyone else in the room or online? Mark, please.
Mark Fungel, seven forty-seven Water. A couple, well, the one point that I did, and I noticed CJ asked why the carve-out of basically Lake Street, because I immediately assumed we were buying the mayor's vote. It came right to mind immediately because that's where she he lives. She's carved out in that process. So that maybe I assumed wrong, but it came to my mind immediately that it looks like you're carving out or buying the mayor's vote. The the other thing that that I have continued frustration is the exaggerations and the miscommunication of facts. Some of the facts I know inside out and backwards, I've been in this business for a long time. And the the facts, last week, somebody stood up about it, but I specifically stood and and listened to one saying this isn't going to affect property values. And the mayor says, I don't may not believe it will affect property values. We've had a lot of experts come and tell you it'll affect property values by about thirty percent. And then on the other hand, the mayor goes and says, well, with this change, property values will come down far enough that families will be able to afford houses on the hill. So it will get rebuild the neighborhoods. That's verate on what she said. So we are going to affect everybody's property values, and that's going to be a problem for a lot of people. The other thing is the numbers, and I don't want to pick on you, Holly, but
But go ahead.
I'm going to just try to help. I've said it before. The average days that we have here are a hundred days for the businesses. And average, depending on the year of occupancy of a vacation rental is somewhere between twenty and thirty percent, somewhere between seventy to a hundred and ten days. You, there's no way we can have seventy-five percent occupancy in vacation rentals in this town. And that's brought up last time, the facts just, it's three hundred percent increase in what reality is. Our average in the year twenty-two was seventy-six days. You know, in in our average in the COVID year was hit a high of a hundred and twelve. So just to understand, I mean, the consultants had this way off. You know, they they said that we had eighty percent occupancy, which wasn't true, in trying to build that case. And then to show the other side, they said average rent in this town for long term was three hundred and ten dollars a month. Average rent for a three-bedroom home in this town is about three thousand, so they're off by a factor of ten. So those numbers, and when we put everything together, it just, it would be easier if we could work together and bring in some expertise versus then leave us outside all the time. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Anyone else online? In the room? Seeing none, we will close out our second public comment, which then moves us to commissioner comments. And this time I'm going to start on this side of the room and ask Bobby if she has anything she'd like to say.
I don't.
No comments?
No, that's for me either.
Not today.
So I'm just going to quickly respond to Mark. So at the council meeting, the numbers I did for short-term rental capacity, one was from July, so it was the month of July last year, and the other one was June, like a month ago. So just, that was what that was. That's it.
Very good. Mark?
I saw the city going around, D B W going around, putting stakes in the ground for permanent park restriction, parking restriction size. That makes me great, that's something we worked on, so. Replacing the temporary with the permanent, I think so.
It's great.
A good thing. Thank you.
CJ?
Oh, I had a little bit more, but I'm just going to say it'd be nice as we get through this one big issue that we can sort of move the page, move forward and reduce the, some of the heat. I thought the mayor did a good job at the last meeting. She had, she heard some of the things and she just moved on as opposed to, I see her still some other people wanting to address what people should say or should not say online from this table, and I don't think this is a place to tell people what they should say. That's it.
Thanks, CJ. Overall, I just want to thank everybody who's on the planning commission, as well as everyone who's in the community that's continuing to speak out on this. I know as we knew eighteen months ago when we were talking about putting it on the agenda, it's not an easy topic. There's a lot of various opinions, even amongst the commissioners here, and that's okay. I think the resolution, as it's drafted, I know there's going to be discussion on what should be in zoning, and I welcome all of you to give comments, you know, as we go through listening to the public hearing next month. I personally kind of like the idea of keeping it more generic as opposed to really putting a lot in the zoning. That's it. That's just me. And then we can kind of leave it up to councils because as several of the council members did stipulate during their meetings, there is an election in less than a hundred, I think it's less than a hundred days now. And there are, you know, potentially people running, and if they have different viewpoints, they would have the ability, if they're elected, to be able to make changes without it having to come back here. And so I would just kind of encourage everybody to kind of stay on top of what's going on within the city, and that would be fantastic. But other than that, I just want to thank everybody for, you know, all the work, Ryan. I know there's still a lot of moving pieces here. I know we may have a new person coming in, but I'm glad we had a nice short meeting. Hopefully, the next months will be short because I still want to get back to looking at the overall zoning, and CJ, I apologize, because that really will not be something that's uncontentious either. As we start to look at, do we want to make changes to some of our individual zones? So prepare yourself for that at the end of this year, going into twenty twenty-five.
Oh, bring our one down to center. That'd be, that'd be an interesting one.
If there's no more commissioner comments, I will move.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, yes. All us in favor? Thank you, everyone.